Good evening. Welcome to the January 22, 2014 Board of Education meeting. We're in executive session starting at 6:00 discussing contractual matters. Any participation in government students here? Okay. At the end of the meeting, you'll have to come up and sign out. If the meeting goes beyond 9:00, we'll take a break and then you can sign out at 9:00 and then we'll continue our meeting. So, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with introductions.
Lynn Lenhart.
Joanne Cunningham.
Kate Barra.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Michael Cooper.
Diane Stever.
Charmaine Widgesinger.
And Judy Keel.
The first item agenda is we were going to have a public hearing. They proposed Hammergrill sewer easement. The town has requested that the school district provide them an easement over at the Hammergrill Elementary School for the purpose of a sewer line to be on the property. And we'll have a presentation to begin that and then we'll have an opportunity for the public to make any comments to the board.
Paul Pennman, the town engineer for the town. Thank you for having us back tonight. And I'll go through and give a quick recap of what we presented at the last meeting for the people that weren't here. The town is in the process of replacing its existing pump station, which is located on McGuffey Lane, which is right about, I'm pointing with the pointer. Based on some improvements that we made to our system, we can actually eliminate the pump station and go by gravity sewer to an existing sewer. So what we're proposing is to install sewer line from the pump station to roughly the backstop on the existing school parcel, the field, coming down the edge of the field to the back corner of the field, cutting across down the water line and then across again. If you remember, when we first did this, there wasn't a little jog in here in the last option that we came to with, the yellow area. But the yellow area is, that parcel was donated, I believe, or donated to the school from the Waldemires. The Waldemires had a deed restriction on the parcel, which said no disturbance on that parcel. So what we did is we met with the Waldemires and we looked at the routing and they're willing to give up the deed restriction, but they did ask us if we could shift it a little bit. And the alignment you see here basically allows us to minimize the clearing of mature trees. I believe it's going to be taken down. There's a big dead tree down there, but it helps us to minimize the clearing. The other routing, there was going to be some significant clearing of some mature trees. Again, there's going to be two structures along the field. One's going to be behind the backstop and then the other one's in the corner. We're running right along the edge of the tree line, again, to minimize mature clearing. There is going to be some clearance, some brush, which will probably get you in a couple spots, about 10 to 15 feet of more sewer, of more field. So that was something we worked with Greg on to optimize the location. We did look at another option, which was kind of discarded, was running straight down along the property line. In order to do that, we would've had to do 30 to 40 feet of clearing of trees and would have eliminated a good portion of the buffer between the residence on Winchester, I think it's Winchester, Westchester, excuse me, Westchester and the school. And we actually heard from one of the residents, I believe he lives on the corner, and he had said he had spoken to some of the neighbors and they much preferred the option of running down the edge of the field. So I think that's pretty much the update on where we have gone since we met last. So if there are any questions?
When you said structures, could you tell us what those look like and how big they might be?
Absolutely. It's a manhole cover in the ground. It's a structure that's in the ground. The sewer is going to be, I think, 12 to 15 feet deep in that area. It's an eight-inch sewer. So this is the axle. Wherever you have a change in direction, you need to put a manhole structure. So the manhole cover will be flush with the ground grass low, so you won't see anything.
Are there any wetlands involved though as you're going down?
No. What we did is part of our project, the first thing we do is we have our consultant do a wetland screening to see if there are any potential wetlands. If we do identify the presence of wetlands, we then do a full assessment and a screening, or not a screening, an actual delineation to see what the impacts would be and whether it's permissible. Our assessment did not show any wetlands as part of this, as part of the screening.
Greg, is that, to your best knowledge, there's no wetlands along that?
And I can provide you, if you want, a copy of the, a copy of the letter that says there's nothing in that area.
Will there be any cutting of any trees? You mentioned brush, but will the actual trees?
Yeah, they're going to have, there's going to have to be some tree cutting. Mostly ones less than six inches in diameter, but I think in this area, there may be, and we're going to be looking at it because, again, this is the general location. We're going to eventually stake it in the field and there might, there's a couple of trees that are on the edge of the easement. We're going to try to save them, but if, we may have to take them down, but.
And what about up towards the playing field?
Again, on this area, just brush. In this area here, when we worked with Greg on this, we did pick this routing to also try to minimize. If you go through that area, it's almost a straight shot with any major trees. There's going to be a couple, but nothing, but that clearly is going to be the one where you're going to take the fewest trees down.
So the neighbors will have trees behind?
Right. And if you look at it, being at an angle, you still have some screening from this way and also looking back from this way, you have some screening rather than if you come straight across.
And you said you verbally have permission from the deed restriction?
Yes. We submitted to Greg, and I'm not sure, we want, I think we wanted to see where this went, but we were working on a proposed agreement of release of the restriction, of the deed restriction from the Waldemires.
Any other board members?
So I assume there's a benefit to the neighborhood of improving this sewer pipe?
Yes, it does. It improves the reliability to the school also. That's a 40-year-old pump station. The pumps don't always work the best, so it could kick out. And there has been some times when it's going out. We've been able to respond to and repair them, but could potentially back up into the neighborhood. Going by gravity, you remove that restriction, it flows by gravity, it's a lot more reliable.
And one more question. I know you presented to the Hammergrill PTA a week ago, I think. How did that meeting go? Any issues come up?
They, I think they asked generally what other approvals we needed to do. We did, we do have to get the school, water board approval for crossing the water main.
Duration of construction?
Duration of construction was asked. One of the things we've been working with Greg on, the hope is to start this, be ready to go and start it once school is out and be done with laying the sewer in that area before Pop Warner starts. I think it gives us about a month. It could go into the Pop Warner season, but it will definitely be done before school starts. That's, that's the idea. You know, and just so you know, we did this, something very similar to this at the Slingle Lynn School for our Kenwood Ave pump station. And we were, our contractor was very good about putting up fencing and making sure, and we did, I believe we did during the summer also, didn't we Greg? So we had no issues there. And again, we made sure we had orange construction fencing along the edge of it so kids couldn't walk into the area. So we're very conscious of making sure people stay away and kids especially stay away from it.
And would Pop Warner be able to still use the field, which is more of a restricted nature?
We, we unfortunately will have many challenges this summer, potentially with our next presentation, so, yes.
I have one other question in part of my naivety of this area. So it's, it's, it works through gravity. What happens when it gets to the endpoint on the map? What, where it is?
Well, this manhole that you see right here, that structure is a manhole, there's a pipe that goes across the bypass that goes down and then the gravity sewer runs down to the south, south to our wastewater treatment plant. So that's just tying, that's just tying into our existing facilities right there.
Okay, great, thank you.
But, and that's all gravity.
Any other board members? Thank you. We'll open it up to the public at this point. Yep. You can come up to the microphone and state your name, please. Forgot to mention we're being videotaped, so.
Well, my name is Tom Butler and I live at 245 Westchester Drive.
You can raise that.
Okay. That'll be a little easier.
Push from the bottom. It's not, just turn the microphone itself.
I got it. Slide it right out. Got it.
I don't do this for a living. My name is Tom Butler and I'm a neighbor at 245 Westchester Drive. I talked to my other neighbors, a lot of them couldn't make it tonight and they had various issues. One of my, one of the neighbors, I think it was Jeff, up on the corner, who'd actually talked to the town. He's an attorney and he's in a trial and a whole bunch of other people couldn't make it because of childcare issues, et cetera. But I talked to Matt a little bit prior to the meeting about some of the questions that I had. And essentially, from my discussions with my neighbors, we're just really concerned about the screening. Essentially, once those trees are cut down for the sewer line, they're not going to, it's going to be a mowed field after that and they're never going to be able to grow back. So a couple of my neighbors and I, we went down yesterday and walked the path. And I guess I look up in the one corner where it kind of jogs from the diagonal to McGuffey to the field, there's a manhole located there. And then there's a manhole located down at the, the one southwest, southwest side of the corner of the line. And you know, what we realized is there's going to be a lot of trees that are going to be, actually be cut down. And you know, that provides a lot of the screening during the summertime and also winter months for the neighbors. And we'd like to see that line maybe moved out 10 or 15 feet towards the school and also potentially the one diagonal that runs from McGuffey to the corner where the parking lot begins. Town actually owns the right of way of McGuffey and it certainly would be easier to go and just dig along the side of the road for the sewer line and go up to the corner and then make actually a right-hand jog into the, into the school. So that's, that's pretty much what we're proposing. If the board would consider that, we really appreciate the board opening up the meeting and allowing us to, you know, ask you some questions and also, you know, give you our concerns. I also had a couple other questions about the wetland delineation. I know that Paul answered some questions about that. I mean, I used to be a hydrogeologist in my, in my prior career. And, you know, federal wetlands is always one of the major issues that I always had to deal with. And you're right behind my house, I'm like, right where the tip of the paper is. Right in here, there's actually a former stream that runs along here and drains between these two houses. And there's actually some piping and, you know, existing drainage in there that's been man-made. But in the springtime, this whole area right in here floods. And I was wondering if you could just ask if it would be possible for the, for the town to actually do a full wetland study of those woods, just for, you know, just for the school board's sake, for the future, also kind of get an idea, an assessment of what wetlands you have in there. That was one request that we had. And then the also, the other thing was, we, in a lot of situations where a town gets a project before them from a developer, they, they request that an independent engineer review the project on their behalf. And essentially, you know, the fees of this is typically paid for by the developer. And we're asking the board to go and have the town pay for an independent engineer just to assess what's going on, kind of give it an idea, is this really, are there other alternatives that have been investigated? Are there other possibilities that may even be more cost-effective than this route? Or, you know, maybe that's, maybe it's the best, best design as it is. But actually, just to have a professional source, independent from the town, that can give you an idea of, you know, what the, what the best decision is. But, you know, again, thank you very much for allowing me to ask these questions and, you know, talk to you and have a great night.
Thank you.
I have a question. I know that Matt had asked this question, you didn't answer, but could you again address the issue of wetlands? Has there been a study, how do we know that that is or is not wetlands there?
We have, well, we have, back up a second. There's a question of whether there could be soils that could be considered wetlands, whether they're regulated wetlands or not is another story. We had, and, but again, we had a professional wetlands scientist go out and walk the area and determine whether there was any presence of wetlands in our proposed routing area. They came back with that there wasn't. So if they had said there's a potential for wetlands out here, it's not even in saying, yeah, you have them. It's, we think there could be regulated wetlands out here, then they recommend the full assessment study. But they cleared the area saying that, you know, and we rely on their professional judgment.
Do you, do you have that in writing or?
I believe we do and we can get a copy for the board.
Yeah, if you can get that, provide that to Greg as well, please.
And I don't know if there's an issue in terms of why it's on an angle versus a right angle, if gravity has a thing to do with that?
I can address that a little bit. Again, when we looked at it, if you look along, first off, you'll see along McGuffey, we are showing a little bit of an easement on that edge. And that's because there's existing utilities in McGuffey. There's an existing sewer line, there's an existing water line. I believe there might be gas in the, in the right of way also. So there isn't necessarily room within the existing right of way. We did look with Greg when we walked it, this area to see if there, and originally, we thought about coming to this point and coming down. Right along this area, you can't, I don't know if you can really see it, but there's some mature trees that if we went through there, they would definitely have to come down. And these are significant trees. The routing we're looking at here, I, it's been a while since I've been out there, but I believe there might only be like one mature tree in that area. And you still, if you're over in this area and you're looking straight through at the angle, you do have a buffer through there. Okay? It's not, it's not like you're running a straight cut through that you can stand on one side and look straight through. If you're anywhere along here at an angle, you know, it's, it's at an angle, so there's trees on the backside of it that tend to screen it. There is, there is, I believe, a dead tree down, out there that we, that does have to come down, but it's dead anyhow. So, so again, we did look at optimizing or minimizing the clearing of mature trees. There are going to be some smaller trees, three to four inch diameter trees. And in this area, it's more so along the backside, that's I think more where the brush is getting cleared. But again, it's brush, it's not anything over, you know, it's not, no, no mature 12-inch trees in that area.
If, if you do need to clear some trees, it's for the purpose of, because the sewer line is below it, but we could ask that trees be planted further back or something to help with the?
We could do some landscaping, you know. The, the, one of the things you have to realize is that with the sewer is that, that sewer is about in 12 feet deep, deep in this area. So that's why we need the 30-foot easement is so that when we dig down, we can't just dig straight down, drop the pipe in, we have to cut back for safety reasons and give a large enough area to put the sewer in. And typically, if we did do some plantings, we would request that we could do them outside of the easement because in the future, we don't expect it a long, long time, if ever, but if we ever had to get in there and do a maintenance or a break or something, we would have to take those trees down. So, and, and trees can cause problems with the sewer. The roots can go into the, and cause problems, so.
And just to clarify, that long stretch there, it looks like about two-thirds of it is primarily by the field.
It's right along the edge of the field. And this overhead is a little bit deceiving. If you look at the manhole, that's right at the edge of the tree line. It looks like the trees extend out this way. That's actually the shadows of the trees from the aerial photography. So this is actually right in the corner of the field. And, and the tree line is more or less in this spot, right in this area.
Any other questions? Any other comments from the public? Okay, thank you. That concludes our public hearing on the matter and the board will take action on it in the future.
Okay. Is there anything that the board would like from us going forward or do you have all the information?
We definitely want to get the, the assessment on the wetlands from your independent source. And also, if you could.
Confirmation of the property, Waldemire property.
Right, Waldemire. We will need that. Whether that's restricted to just that corner or the whole land.
Do you want us to move forward with getting that executed and moving the documentation on it? I mean, the, the concern that we have is, again, we're trying to start when school gets out and we just want to make sure that we have enough time to get all the ducks in a row and make sure we have time to get everything done, so.
I, I think in regards to that, because that is going to be a legal document, I don't know how quick you could produce that.
The agreement?
If any action from the board were taken, that would have to be written in, that the, that's the only way that it could proceed, is upon final confirmation.
We have, we have a draft document already in place that we've given to Greg. I guess one of the other questions is if the board is amenable to granting the easement, is, are they okay with the alignment? Because as part of the approval or the easement is, we actually have to prepare a legal description by a licensed surveyor. And this was, again, conceptually, we'd want to now start moving forward and fine-tune the design so that we say, this is exactly where we want to put it. When I say fine-tune, it might shift a foot or so from what you're seeing there because that's at a high level, you know, it's at a aerial level. So we would actually want to go out and lay out the sewer and put it exactly where we want to put it so that when you are ready to act on it, we could have the documents ready for the board.
If we were to act on it at the next meeting, maybe?
Yeah. I think we've talked with the.
That's great. All right. Again, thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Moving on to the next item, item number three, approval of minutes. The minutes of the January 8, 2014 regular board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number four, student senate report. Do we have the representatives from the student senate here? Okay. Next, superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Downey. The superintendent's report tonight, I'm going to try to modify a little just from my original notes. First of all, we do want to congratulate our winners of the BCMS Spelling Bee. On Thursday, January 16th, our students participated in this Spelling Bee and we'd like to congratulate Jill Monteleone for first place from eighth grade Petroni 1, Liam Carl from seventh grade Petroni 2, third place Holly Moore from eighth grade Petroni 1, and fourth place Caleb Fetterman for seventh Mohawk House. So we want to congratulate those students and we wish them well on February 11th as they will be going forward on the regional bee, which will be televised on Time Warner, with the hopes that we would potentially see a winner for the National Spelling Bee in Washington DC. So great job. Also, I had the opportunity this past week to go over to Proctors in Schenectady to see the student exhibit that we have mentioned and it was truly a wonderful presentation of our students' artwork, over 25 pieces that were presented with exploring the power of separation to bring us closer. Definitely the theme was very much well captured by our entire art department, as well as many of our teachers and our students were able to attend and make the opening of War Horse there, a memorable event. And I know the management of Proctors really appreciated all the artwork and the draws, so congratulations to the art department. The biggest thing tonight is really about our regional advocacy. And for those that will be seeing this on Sunday night, we would ask that, you know, everyone in the town of Bethlehem, the town of New Scotland, that are participants in the Bethlehem Central School District, as well as school districts all over the capital region, consider participating in our advocacy event this year for education. As everyone is aware, the governor released his budget proposal, I believe, yesterday and we are looking at those numbers because for Bethlehem, we are looking at continued flat funding for now going into a fifth year, which that makes any corporation financial challenge difficult to say the least, with school districts where we have to rely on two revenue sources, either from the state or the local level, that much harder, especially when there's a tax levy limit and that limit is lower than the 2% that is widely being touted. We will have a lot of challenges ahead, but we will rise to those challenges. But this is the time where we help our elected leaders to make sure that they do the best for our students and our community and our district here in Bethlehem. So I would ask that those people that are interested on January 30th at 6:30, please come and join about 50 to 70 hopeful participants from Bethlehem Central at Colony Central High School for our regional advocacy event with the number one purpose of asking our state government to eliminate the GEA. That will provide immediate relief to all school districts across the state and also put money that is already earmarked in the budget where it's supposed to be, educating our students for tomorrow. So that is really what I'd like to emphasize. We'll be having some more information coming out very shortly, but if you can spread the word on behalf of the board, on behalf of the district and on behalf of this community, please reach out to our office. We'll make sure that we reserve a seat and we want to see a sea of orange on January 30th. So thank you and we're looking forward to the challenges ahead.
Dr. Douglas, do we have contact information up on our website for our legislators so people can contact them if they wish?
Yes, that, that's a, that's a good piece of information. Last year, we started advocacy toolkit in conjunction with Capital Region BOCs and that information is available on our website, plus we'll be also sending out continued SNNs for advocacy over the next several weeks, as well as specifically towards the end of this week, as we try to firm up our numbers. But I, I will say, we have two wonderful senators that represent this district and an outstanding assemblywoman that represents this district and they are working very hard, but we need to make sure that we provide them with the communication devices that they can deliver to the legislature to represent Bethlehem and also make their voice more powerful. So thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Dr. Douglas? Moving on, the board of education report. Have any items to discuss? Lynn? No?
No.
Mike? I've never known you to be speechless.
It just, he sounded so up and like, oh, we're going to get nearly 4% increase in aid, whatever, and then he doubles in the details and, you know, the runs don't show that, you know, that amount of aid, so, you know, we're still, I guess, working out the details, but it's kind of disappointing. I mean, money really isn't there, so we'll have to really work on the advocacy.
Definitely, we need to get the, the community behind us and contact the legislators.
I have a question for Dr. Douglas. I noticed I was in the hallways this evening and I noticed the pool is open and there was concern there. Can you just update the, us about, it looks like it's being used and is that?
Yes. Actually, it's a wonderful segue going into our presentation eventually, too. The pool, it has been reopened through an engineering inspection that brought about some deficiencies in, in the pool columns in regards to the roof. And those have been shored up and, how would you say, welded, posted and given much more support than what we found that they had on a temporary basis. But that will pretty much sort of bite into our small capital project that we were planning to do some other work because it was an emergency need. So that will be something that we'll be talking about in the budget. Greg, do you have anything else in, in regards to that?
Basically, we are submitted to SCD and they are reviewing the project, which Ashley and Ryan Biggs designed. And work will progress, we'll bid it out once we get approval. But it's safe to be in there.
Thank you.
Just one, just one little comment and this kind of goes to Tom's comments about the, the budget and, and also your comments, Lynn, about sort of the rhetoric matching or mismatching what the reality is. And, you know, and this is really for the folks who are watching, who are participating here. It's really easy for lawmakers to listen once and listen politely and say, yeah, I'm with you, I'm with you. And then the next person comes in the office and talks about some other issue, environmental issue, healthcare issue, and immediately your message is gone and diminished and now they're focused on something else, somebody else. And I just think the community has to understand that the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And the community really got very engaged on issues like Common Core and APPR and, and really, I think, made quite an impression on our policymakers. But without the money, I mean, school districts can't even provide the, the status quo level of services, let alone, you know, reach higher and go farther. So, I mean, this community needs to match what they've been doing and really all communities, what they've been doing on Common Core with the money. And the money is, you know, it's a simple message to get rid of the, you know, the gap elimination mechanism that is really just chipping away every single year at schools like Bethlehem and we can't do it. We can't do it without that baseline. And I just think people need to, I mean, there's a ton of information on the internet. I saw that NISBA sent out a really good budget message that is very simple to understand. That is a website that has lots of publicly available stuff that parents can read. I'm sure that we have information that we'll be sending out. Those SNNs last year and in prior years were really important information, but people need to rise up because the squeaky wheel gets the grease. It works every time in every legislature, whether it's Congress or whether it's the New York State Legislature. And if we're going to. And if we're going to be successful, I mean, it's a simple recipe. It's about people's voices, and it's more than just showing up on January 30th. It means, you know, the next week, you're calling that legislator or you're emailing that legislator. And then the week after that, saying, hey, just checking in with you, where are we on this issue? And the more people that do that, it truly does move mountains. And I think our community needs to understand. The gun went off yesterday with the release of the budget, and we are in a race against every other constituency until April 1, and then the budget's done. It's over. And win, lose, or draw, we're stuck with whatever the outcome is. In some ways, I'm probably conflicted because I give the same message to my own members, and I hope their voices are as loud as the education voices because in the end, it's pitting one really good interest against another. And this community and all communities in New York really need to get activated and do that. So, I appreciate your energy. I love the pen. I'll start wearing my pen. But I think people need to realize it's serious stuff, and it's not getting any better. And don't believe the platitudes of the articles that are in the paper that talk about increased funding for education because it's not the reality. So, sorry, just wanted to jump.
If I would add anything, if we truly had increased funding in education, especially in these very difficult times, you would see that with the state picking up more of its share, the locals would be relied on less at this point. It's all about us filling the hole for the state, and we need to stop that.
And we really do. I agree to work hard because there are people that are down there every day. I'm a little shocked. They meet in that little cafe, and they're pounding on the legislators' doors every day. And they said, gee, who can compete with that? I mean, that's really tough, but we have to do our best. I mean, we certainly can't give up, so.
I totally agree with you.
And actually, you know, it's a great agenda for the students in government. You know, get your group to write letters, send emails to lawmakers. I'm a student in Bethlehem. This matters to me. This, you know, this level of funding is about services and curriculum and programs in our school. I mean, it's a great thing for students to do, and I'll tell you, lawmakers love getting information and letters and communications from young people. So, you know, to the extent that you guys can use your, you know, your, you know, government class or your, that initiative as a way to sort of activate a group, it's very, very helpful.
I know we brought that up last year, too, to have students do that. I don't know if you can encourage that again, maybe even give extra credit? Yeah, have the social studies teachers give extra credit?
And I think, Joanne, the SNN notifiers are great for the community. Again, we have people who have very, the community that's very supportive of education here in Bethlehem. And just to reiterate again that the GEA is still there. I mean, potentially, theirs is going to decrease possibly by 100,000. It's nothing to, you know, it's still at $3 million, right?
3.4 million dollars.
Dollars. The state says, this is the law. This is how much money you get based on the formula of the law. They run the, do the runs, and then they say, by the way, we're going to take 3.4 million away from that. So, they're not living up to the law, really, is the issue. And they call it the Gap Elimination Adjustment, which is to balance the budget. Well, you can't have a surplus if you're still trying to balance the budget on the school district, so. All right. Moving on, presentation next. We'll have a capital project update from Greg Nolte.
And Dan.
My Greg.
See, he puts me up here.
I'm sorry.
Greg, you lost a little height there.
A little dinner on my.
I follow the script. No.
I'm Dan Hugh Craft with Ashmara Architects. Good evening. Thanks for having me. Also with us tonight is Ange Geisha and Scott Bulrisz from Campus Management Group, our construction manager. And so, we do have, there's a lot of information we'll be giving tonight. That's our agenda. So, at the end of each slide, what I'd like to do is ask if anyone has questions because we're going to go through a lot of things. And one of the issues that we want to, was on your agenda, is to not, is to explain any jargon or any, you know, abbreviations that we have as well, especially for the public, too. So, it's that OACM meeting, an OACM team. The OACM is Owner, Architect, and Construction Manager. It's not an acronym I came up with, but it's one that's fairly common. So, just an update, I think it was a couple months ago we last gave a project update and where we were. And we were going through design phases. We, I think we had just submitted our project to SED in September. So, between now and then, this is a list detailing all the kinds of things that we've been doing over the past few months. It's really taking the design documents that are at pending approval at the state right now. SED is the State Education Department. And going through them with our team and with the construction manager, really honing in, fine tuning all the details, making sure we're getting all those bond projects, the 90 bond items, and taking care of them, making sure that this set of documents can go out to bidders and is a very accurate document that gets what we want. So, we've been meeting consistently every two to three weeks. We met today for several hours going over a lot of these items, logistics, schedule, planning, long-term things, things we will anticipate and expect, and how to react to those things, too. So, this is just sort of a snapshot of where we are. Go to the next page. A little bit about where we are in, just before New Year's, we received, I received a phone call from State Ed Department, from Tony Frandino. He's our architectural reviewer, so he looks at everything except for mechanical, electric, plumbing, and security, things like that. So, it's interesting, the process, if no one's gone through it, is that reviewer will call the architect, and we have a phone conversation, and we flip through drawings, and I need to get my red pen and kind of circle and write down everything that he says. So, from that process, and that's it, phone call, you're done. Send us your revisions. So, I'll transcribe that information. We put it together in an email or something written to him to show, these are the items that we talked about, and we hope you approve. We've got everything. And then here's how we address those issues. So, it was fairly a nice review. I put there maybe 10 clarifications that needed to go into the specs, and they're all related to, like, bidding for public and making sure you don't have anything proprietary and stuff like that. And then on the drawings, we have, like, I don't know, 300 drawings. So, 20, going through and finding stuff on 20 drawings was pretty good. And mostly, they're making sure we called out, you know, fire ratings and code things and life safety things. So, it was a really good review. Between now and then, we've put together what we call an addendum to our submission, and it should be going in today or tomorrow to answer all those. And what we do is follow up with Tony once he gets them to make sure he agrees with everything. And sometimes we'll have, like, a sketch or a little drawing or an update to the spec. And really, we treat it as if we were out to bid and that a contractor is getting these sort of revisions or clarifications. So, that's kind of the process. And what Tony said is, in December, that he would be passing that submission on to the Mechanical Electric Plumbing Engineering Review. So, I won't go there yet. So, it's interesting because when you check the website, it says right now, the Mechanical Electric Plumbing guys are reviewing things that were submitted on August 15, or August 15. So, we submitted on September 23rd. So, we're roughly between four and five weeks, we anticipate, having review from SED. So, that puts us to in late February, and it's exactly where we want to be on our schedule. We're hoping, we have a schedule update here as well. But I just want to let you know, we'll go through that same process again of, they'll get us on the phone, we'll go through the drawings and specs. So, we expect that to be sometime about four to five weeks from now. Any questions on that process so far? So, with the tremendous amount of help coming from Campus to put together an estimate, originally, almost a year ago, we started out with a budget and a conceptual budget on how to do these 90 bond items. And so, Campus has been working very hard to separate the construction or hard budget of all the physical things we're building. The soft budget is cost of testing fees and things of that nature. And what we typically find is we hold a contingency amount in construction time so that if we come across any unknowns or anything that we want to change or we have a no choice change that we have to make, say it's, I don't know, some sort of hazardous material that we discover, that's what that construction contingency is for. So, it's sort of our safety net for any of those unknowns that we couldn't possibly foresee. The 5% to 6% is a fairly standard practice. It's a, it's a, how do you say it? How do you say it, Ange? It's a?
It's consistent with.
Standard practice, right?
Yeah.
For public bid projects, yep.
Because this is renovation, we usually earmark somewhere around 10% in the very beginning in relation to site work and renovation. So, with a successful project going forward, we'll look to be able to reduce that and then maybe be able to have additional funds left over to do more things in the projects.
Exactly. So, as we get into the work and the work is accomplished, any contingency we don't use can roll back into doing more or enhancing work or doing more work. So, this is actually the results of the second estimate based on the documents we sent into SED. And we've gone through reconciliation process a few times, asking questions. Is this what you intended to do? Is this going to meet the 90 bond items that we have? So, that was a good, long, give and take process. And during that time, we want to be able to put alternates into this project as well. And we started this over a year ago. And moving forward, at that time, we really couldn't anticipate or expect what we will find in the bidding climate this spring when we want to go out. And so, we have to protect and have a safety valve for our project. And so, we've identified by priority some of those things that, and I'll get to the next slide, talk about, that we would like to have as alternates to help us protect the project. Because, say for instance, everything comes in and it's $10 overbid, and you have no alternate or no way to remedy that, then you can't move forward with the project. So, this is all very typical, usual, standard practice for a public bidding type situation with schools. This is what you see as common practice throughout the state.
Can I ask a question before you move to the next slide? So, that 1.294, the project alternates, that's in addition, that's added to the 20?
No, it's not. It's part of that total.
It's part, it's subsumed under that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep. And there's a total, we have a total of 16 of those identified. So, it's not like one or two.
Dan, if I may, so what you're saying is all 90 of our projects, everything that we've put up is in the $20,501,000. Everything's there.
Yes.
That means that the estimate is that much. And if the bids come in below that, that's good, and we've got everything done.
Yes.
If the bids came in above that, you've identified alternates that could potentially be reduced from the project and the dollar amount that could come out based on those projects.
Correct.
So, it's sort of a tool to help make sure that we're always on budget or below budget.
It's, yes, it's an excellent segue into the next. What Greg wanted us to put is Alternates 101. And again, this is, it's being shrewd and conservative to protect what it is we're trying to do. So, if we just went out with and thought, well, it's going to cost us $15 million and really hope that that's what it's going to be, and it's not, and we have no backup, no alternate to take care of that. So, alternates are a part of doing business in New York State for public schools. They're effective way of, actually, they're, and you guys can chime in, too. It's also a good way to challenge the bidders as they come forward because they know that if they can not only be competitive with their bids for all the things we want to do, but those alternates as well, there's a better chance that we'll come in under budget and we'll get to do everything. So, it is, it's a nice tool. It's a technique. We typically look at about 5% of the construction cost in value of those. So, that is, as Charmaine asked, that's still within the total thing that we're bidding out. So, it's a safety valve if there's a strike or steel runs up or sheet rock, gypsum oil, any of those things, we're protected within the work we're doing so that we have, you know, choices to make. Yes?
At what point in this process can you use the 5% to 6% contingency? If nothing comes up and everything is flowing nicely, and you reserve that, how might we spend that?
I.
And at what point?
Yes. I always would confer with the construction managers because I'd probably want to use it before it's safe. But typically, as we go through, almost everything here is renovation reconstruction, so we're going to be taking things apart and tearing them. So, we'll get to a certain point where we've really done, ripped apart as much as we will. And so, everything going back is new, and I think we've identified, for the most part, any unknowns that we think we would see. So, I'm not sure, maybe after the first summer, we would feel safe to, you know, reevaluate or assess what it is we want to do with the contingency amount?
It's pretty close. What we try to do is we try to measure the amount of completion of the project percentage-wise. And then we start to say, well, what's left? Then we start to evaluate whether or not what is left is really something that we've had vast experiences to be risky type of work. Okay? And based on the history of the district and maybe, you know, things that Greg has run into and, you know, throughout the years, we make, as Scott said, a group decision on whether or not we can further reduce it. And we, you know, we take small steps so that we, you know, we're certain that we have enough money to complete our project properly.
And as Ange and Scott will say, our numbers are conservative. Need to be. Any questions on that? So, timeline, logistics, and scheduling. All along, we've been working on a master schedule, and we are within it. We feel very comfortable. Actually, we got our SED comments coming back earlier than I thought. We thought maybe in January, so it was nice to get those in December. And hopefully, the four to five week expectation, we can't control it, but we hope that we get our comments, the bulk of our comments back sometime the end of next month. So, that's really good. That puts us into, let's say, the beginning of March to prepare the documents for bidding. If, we can't jump right into it because we don't know if SED will have anything else they want us to change. We need a, you know, a reasonable amount of time to get those comments in back to them, and they sign off on it. So, we anticipate there will be something. There usually is. But that does get us into a really good early spring bidding position. That's very good. Scott and Ange, this is a great time to get out to bid on these school projects. So, hopefully, things go well, and in May, we'll receive those bids. I put May 1st. And hopefully, sometime in May, we'll be able to present to you and make recommendations for the contracts to award and move forward on our project. So, we, just like today, for several hours, we continue to work on the master schedule, continue to look at if X happens, then Y. So, we look at those sort of scenarios and impacts of different work going on. There's a lot of work going on in this district and a lot of it here at this campus as well. So, we have looked at the types of work and are proposing to use seven prime contracts. So, we will have a general trades, general contractor, site and playground contractor, and they're listed up there. We've broken out technology as its own, and we've grouped electrical and security as their own. And general trades or general contractor will also do asbestos contracting. That's helpful that we won't have to depend on one single abatement contractor as a sub to the general trades guy. He may elect to have one, two, or three to get the job done successfully. So, that was part of the reasoning behind these seven prime contractors. And again, we've been meeting, all of our meetings, we're going about phasing. Not only are OACM. our OACM meetings, but meetings with administrators. We have a new athletic director, so that's great. So we've been meeting with people, even community members that have, there's going to be an impact on the things that we do, especially here at the high school. What we, what we wanted to show tonight, just, we know we'll have further project update meetings, but we wanted to bite off a chunk that we could chew. And so we looked at the summer of 2014, a little bit into the fall, kind of identified the biggest scopes of work. And the, the goal behind how we've been scheduling this is to get the most reasonable, most amount of work done sooner rather than later. And so we do have a lot going on this summer. This is just a list identifying the key areas that we're going to be starting in here at the high school. And there's, there's a huge amount of work going on. Most of this is to resolve drainage. So we, the work that we do is to dig in and under, so we have to take some fields up to put some of this storm water management, trenching, and drains in. So it is going to have an impact, and we're very, you know, sensitive to that. So we're trying to work out ways to mitigate, you know, having no use of any of the fields so that we have some temporary field to take care of PE and other sports as well. So this just identifies that, shows some things that will be available September. But we put together a nice graphic to kind of show you, if you're in a helicopter looking down at the high school, you could see the impacts of some of this work. A big amount, there we go, a big amount of work is going on at the stadium with the track, the field there, drainage, the different events as well as tennis courts. It's a big project there. We, and irrigation as well. And so we've, I can't tell from here what colors are what. So red is the work that can take place immediately as soon as school lets out or programs end. So we, and we really feel confident that those areas can get done quickly. And so the tennis courts is a nice, easy piece on its own, also looking at the other areas that are small, sort of separated from the bigger work scopes. So if we can get those out of the way, like a domino effect, we're allowed to get into the next area, which is the green. So there's, those two big areas would be next, and they are really full summer, right into August work. A lot of work going on there. Then to follow that, in the next year, are these, this area right here, because we can't take off your softball and varsity and spring sports and fall sports without having some backup plan to utilize some of the fields for that. So it is sort of, you know, a shell game almost of making sure you get to one space and get over to the next one and allow sports to occur safely and reasonably. So this, this is a work in progress. It's, it's the format or the template we're following right now.
June 2014 to August 2015, does that mean you're starting it and then finishing the following summer?
No, that means you could be on it until August 2014 in the pink areas.
Right, what about the, the light green says June 2014 to August 2015?
That's this area, the softball.
No, the green.
No, no, it's the football field.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're going to start it June, for two summers, you can't use it?
Correct.
Unfortunately, when we tear up the grass and have to put it back down again, we do need three growing seasons unless we look, I think we have an alternate, a bid alternate to use sod, which would shorten that time. But you do need three growing seasons, and that's a fall, a spring, and a summer where you can water, mow, and make sure the grass comes up and becomes established. So if you get on it before it's established, you could ruin it and then have to remediate it somehow. So that's, unfortunately, you do have to let grass grow and let it mature.
So when would the green fields be offline? The summer of 2014?
2015.
Yeah. Basically, we've been coordinating with athletics and phys ed. We'd be looking to get on the stadium field probably around mid-June, okay? And we pretty much construct throughout the summer, pretty much into the fall, and hopefully get that fall as one of our first growing seasons, okay? And that would remain offline pretty much for the spring of 2015 and summer of 2015, which would allow us to have fall sports on the stadium field. Okay? So that as well goes for the practice football area, the JV softball field, which is right here, and this is a field hockey field, so this whole area as well would be put back online.
For the fall sports and then off again?
No, 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 no. This is offline until summer or fall 2015.
So the stadium's going to be used?
Stadium is off as well. These, these two areas are off pretty much from, you know, this summer until fall of 2015.
So there's no fall football games at home 2014?
Correct.
What we use in the middle school?
Well, again, so we have been starting the process of meeting with phys ed, with meeting with athletics to start talking about the impacts of this massive construction, okay? And we have four pages of detail, and we've actually have schematics which aren't all nice yet, about temporary fields that we're going to have to construct in, in, in this area and, and in these areas here and over here to use to get us through this period of time. So there's, there's tremendous amount of detail, exactly what we're going to do, how we're going to do it. I've already been in contact with Len, and we started talking about certain things, the new athletic director, and potential items that we're going to have to consider. And again, not just for athletics, but for phys ed, for outside groups that use all of these fields as well. So this is a tremendous effort, tremendous impact. We can get into the detail at a subsequent meeting.
This will probably be the biggest bone of contention over the next year and a half. But remember, we, we kind of addressed that as we were going through the process because there's no possible way that you can work in every area and then have it immediately ready. One of the things I know football's already working with, I know once Len starts in a couple weeks, he'll, he'll be tasked with is working out some of the details for the upcoming season because I know the head coach has been made aware of it. And there's potential options. How can we try to, you know, maintain the ownership of our own program? In a lot of these situations, most teams tend to play away. I think, if I use Water of Elite right now, they played away all, almost every contest for the past year and a half away, not just in football, but in other areas. Well, once the new facilities come online, they've reaped the benefits, but unfortunately, there's a little pain that you have to go through to do this type of an overhaul. One of the, one of the challenges is going to be, do we do some things that are not as well to the standard that maybe we would do in the stadium, at the middle school? Do we take a special event and rent off-site? Do we transport? Do we try to work out intermunicipal agreements? Because I know softball will have a concern down the road, but we have wonderful parks and rec that are close by as well. So those are all things the OACM team, as well as our new athletic director, are going to be challenged with, especially over the next three months. But trying to get that information out so that we're trying to address everything, but that we have to remind the board as well as the community, there's a limit of what we can do. We're just trying to be as kind of the
So it sounds, it sounds like there are some temporary field, there are, will be some fields. It sounds like you're creating, in a way, replacement fields, some of them. Yes.
Yes, we're looking at temporary practice and, and game fields.
And will people be able to use the track, or is the track going to be off limits too?
Track will be, we're not impacting sports at all this spring, and the track should be completed and ready for spring 2015. However, the field will not be usable at that point. Tennis as well, that is, we're going to mill that down during the summertime, get it paved back, and we might have to move the beginning of practice, which is mid-August, to the middle school. But basically, with the season opening up in September, the, the new courts will be all set to go.
And if I may make a suggestion in any of our slides, if we could just update them, potentially available or planning to be available, not just saying they are going to be available. Because as we know, if we get a wet weather, the fields, no one's going anywhere on this clay.
I'm sure probably the planning will start soon for the next fall schedule. Do we know when section two schedules are?
We're, we're waiting. Usually, I know football schedules usually start around March.
They should be, oh yeah, within two weeks.
Yeah. To finalize.
So, so I mean, whoever's doing the scheduling, like for field hockey or whatever, is already aware of that?
Everything will be going through Len at that point, Len and Greg and the team.
I have a question. You alluded to the fact that you're working also with Bethlehem's club team sports that also rely on those fields. I mean, those are big programs that are feeder programs for our middle school teams and our high school teams. I assume you're orchestrating
Good work.
You know, some, some good planning with those teams too, because we want to minimize disruption for, you know, the whole community that uses our fields.
The work on, on all of the high school fields will impact use of the middle school fields, will impact even use of some of our elementary school fields. Because we might, potentially, we might use eagles for practice for softball, middle school, we're preliminarily thinking that we might have modified freshman and JV football games there. Pop Warner plays on that field, so what are the impacts of that?
Right, but I'm also thinking like the Bethlehem lacrosse club
Yep.
Uses the high school fields routinely.
Yeah.
And they're planning a big, robust, usual year of summer stuff. I assume you guys are talking to them to make sure that they know, they've got to figure out, you know, where else they can go.
Yeah, I, we've already dealt with the schedules for the high school and the middle school fields. A lot of these groups have already been in contact with us. I know Dave Brown pretty much has that three-week camp. And basically, we're, this is the, this is kind of the beginning of our PR of, of these impacts. We've already met with, you know, some of the administrators. We're starting to meet with the, you know, the AD, the supervisors, the user groups, the clubs. I've already had contact with Pop Warner. So this is happening, and we're starting here, and we're going to continue on.
Yeah. In other words, our best, best laid plans, we're going to try to make as many people as happy as possible, but we're trying to caution them now that first and foremost comes to schools requirements.
Right, right.
Second, our communities. And, but no matter what, in between that first and second, is the ability to do the construction project as safely as possible. Some clubs that have used our property primarily, we also need them to reach out to the town because the town definitely has fields that can be used. But we're trying to, we're trying to balance that as much as possible. Like, one of our major concerns has been at the middle school with the farmer's market. I think we have that worked out, that that won't be interrupted, but there may be some jostling here and there. So that's a good thing because we know the community really works on that. But that's what the team's been doing. I think now with, with Len coming on board, that's going to help. And I would ask if anybody knows any clubs or agencies, please contact the athletic office because that's where they should focus at first, or in the, in the interim with Greg, and then Greg and Len will work those scheduling details out.
And we have already had conversations with the town about this impact, because it's not just the fields, but it's also the buildings are going to impact a lot of their programs as well. And then we've talked about, once the AD is on board, we'll have a, a meeting with all the coaches to, you know, to talk about the impacts to them and their specific, you know, practice needs, their game needs and all that stuff. So this is the beginning, and you'll hear a lot more on this. All right, continue on.
Thank you. So needless to say, this is an incredible challenge that we're facing here and meeting. That's not to say that there's also, we put together a list of some of the work that we see starting in the summer at each building. So there's a lot of work going on at the high school as well as the site work. Again, the plan is to get, within reason, is to be aggressive and get as much work done that can be done sooner rather than later, or not have something start and then stop and then have to do it again in the spring or summertime. So we looked at the, the amount of work that's there, roofing and, and other things that could go right away, get started right away, and push to have those things done during the summer so that they're finished by fall. Other things can take place, second shift or after hours as well, that don't impact any student or staff use that are either above ceilings or out of the way, so you wouldn't see that work going on. So we're looking at those things simultaneously to try to really get the biggest bang for a buck at each building without turning things upside down. So that's the goal as we move forward with the work at Bethlehem High School this summer. Middle school also has a large majority of work going on. All of these things, we're looking at as soon as school lets out or any programs are done, to go right in, get that work done. We're letting contractors know, we want these things done this summer. So however it is you need to man up, get more crews, or do first shift and second shift, that's what needs to be done. So we're looking at that, and it makes more sense for contractors to get work done faster rather than stretching it all out. So these are more of the
I have a question about the middle school.
Yep.
And I can't remember all the different projects, but
Sure, yeah.
Were they going to work on the entryway for, around safety for that? I'm not sure where, if that was part of the bond, I thought it was. And if it would be done, do you have a sense of when that might happen? Because I noticed in the elementary school, there's some entry work being sort of shorn up and changed. Do you remember anything from the middle school?
Well, here at the middle school, we are, and you know, they have the, the black tarps and things up above
Okay.
Holding stone in place.
Oh.
Those things are going to be worked on.
Oh, I think it was more security wise.
Oh, security.
Between those two sets of doors.
Yes, yep. As soon, yep, as soon as that equipment gets ordered and onsite, we're going to have that done right away.
Okay.
So we, we start with that right away.
Okay, great, thank you.
Dan, and Dan, if I, if I can also emphasize, I know that you know this as well, but for our public especially, that I agree, we want to emphasize to get the work and get it done right away as soon as possible. But, and I know campus knows this, it's not get it done, it's do it right. And yes, do it as expeditiously as possible, but we want it right the first time, not going back.
Yes, yep. I, so that's why I stress, within reason, we want, because we don't want anyone to take a shortcut just to try to finish up quick, so. Very good.
I may also, heard the word, and I just want to stress, part of our plan as a group is also to make number one priority, safety. Safety for the students, safety for the workers, safety for everyone involved. So our way of thinking and the work that's going to take place, we've implemented the idea, a thought of where people are going to park, materials are going to be located, where fencing is going to be so that traffic is in and out in a safe, you know, environment. So I just wanted to put out this.
Can I ask another question? When I think about that visual of the fields, and, I mean, that's a significant part of the, you know, sports fields at any given time that's going to be out of commission, meaning we're going to be using middle school and elementary school fields and trying to kind of juggle. So has there been any thought to the fact that we're now going to be maxing out the use of these other fields, and we may need to do some additional work on those fields because they're going to have a lot more activity?
Yes, we're actually a couple steps ahead of that, at least at this point, because we talked about no summer use of the middle school track field because we have to get on it, we're going to oversee, we'll fertilize, we'll do everything to try to get some type of, try to improve the turf that's there, knowing that it's going to get very abused by potentially, you know, three football levels on that in, in the fall. So, you know, we've talked about that. And again, we don't have the plan here, but there's a lot of, there still are plenty of, you know, a lot of fields here, especially in the fall times. We use the outfield of both JV and varsity baseball, and we actually put other fields in here, whether or not they be soccer or lacrosse. We can put them there, and then as well, out here as well. And then with what we're doing actually on this field right here, this is going to be usable as well, the, the varsity soccer field, as we call it here, because we're doing a Sandmaster application where we're just putting slits of sand to improve, to improve the drainage here. So that is not overly intrusive to the quality of the turf. This is an irrigated field, so, you know, this is something that they're going to get on. This is an irrigated field, so, you know, this is something that they're going to get on, they're going to do. We're going to irrigate it, so pretty much by, by the fall, or by September, we're going to be able to use that field. So, you know, this is going to be green, you know, as well. So it is.
And, and that's one of, one of the things why we emphasize that we have to take care of the school priorities first, as well as try to balance some of the communities. But we also will have to manage our fields, and sometimes we're going to have to close them. We'll hear it every time we do it, but I think you bring up a very good point. We can't beat our other fields up while we're fixing these. So that will be a judgment between Greg, Len, and our use of facilities.
We've also even talked with phys ed and middle school staff, that they recess out there. They do PE out there on that, on that track field. We want to push them in the back more. Just, any, any use off that field is what we're looking at, so.
So just to continue with identifying those, the big items we want to tackle at the elementary schools. Again, like Charmaine had asked, secure enhancements will be first and foremost on our list of things to do. We also, we're cognizant of all the amount of work that's going on at the high school. So we, we are looking at, you know, saving some other things that make sense to do this summer of 2010, 2015. So this is just a smattering of things that will go on this summer.
Can I ask, the Elsmere playground, will that go on in the summer also? Or do you think, or is that going to trail a bit? Because it's listed for Glenmont, but not for Elsmere.
Yep. Oh, we do, we have it hidden, right?
Oh, yes, okay. I overlook, sorry.
So that, yes, those will be taking place this summer.
Yeah, I believe that's going to be an interesting piece of work with the drainage work there, right?
At Elsmere?
Sort of new.
Yeah, all three, well, Elsmere and Glenmont both have some significant drainage work to take place. Glenmont more, so, because it is, it's wet along the side there, so we're going to take care of that. At Hammagill, we're going to do the playground work this, this coming summer. But the drainage work that goes, actually, the next one. The drainage work that surrounds that doesn't affect the playground itself, the playscape itself. So we can easily do, concentrate on the playground, and then next summer, work on the area around it. So maybe we can get the town to do it with their easement. At least, they're gone.
The issue of drainage at Elsmere came up a few years ago, because SAVIC took it on as a project, and they had the bulldozer and everything ready the night before, and the town said you can't drain it into the ravine. So I mean, that's, and, and also if the town wants to use that, if we want to use that as an alternate field, my kids want it, so I just know.
At Elsmere?
It, it, it's a big puddle, and so.
Yep, so we do, drainage is, is going to be addressed there.
No, no, that's, that's at the Eagle.
And what we did want to do is spend all this money on new playgrounds and, and put a playground on something that wedded and doesn't drain good. So we're going to take care of that problem. Actually, at Hammagill, we're kind of excited, because we're not replacing that existing wood play structure. We're actually going to be putting this playground kind of on the knoll within all of the trees. So no drainage is impacted there, and basically all three playgrounds are going to be going in this summer.
Great.
And again, this is just a list of some of the things we know, like at transportation, we have asphalt paving phase one. Some things we, we want to make sure other things are done before we pave around them. So we don't want to stop and start and try to patch things together, so. So certain things make sense of doing this summer and the next summer. We don't want to overload the contractor, but we want to get as reasonable and with the best amount of care done of the work we can this summer. Sure?
There's kind of a common theme of security enhancements at all the schools. Can you just briefly kind of say what that is?
Yes. Basically, you have single point of entrance at all your buildings, and we're upgrading, enhancing the current system you have there now. The trouble that, that being able to see people properly and not having the cameras. So we're replacing all that equipment right there where it is with newer equipment. The controls are back in the main office to let people in. That's sort of the, the general bulk of what we're doing at each building.
I, I know at Elsmere, there are, I think we toured it at one point, from the hallways, certain classrooms have glass windows. I think those are going out, if I recall, and that's another piece.
I think actually some of that we're doing in-house.
Yeah, we've actually done a good number of rooms already at, at Glenmont. Okay? And we haven't done Elsmere, just we haven't had the, the labor or the opportunity yet. But, yeah, that, that's part of, part of the master plan. As well, from a security standpoint, cameras, high school, middle school, operations and maintenance exterior and transportation exterior to protect a lot of, or at least to view that fleet. You know, just one thing also that I just want to really emphasize is, in addition to the field work, we are doing massive asbestos abatement, okay? Here's so much, I mean, on this complex, it's pretty much D-wing, two stories, a lot of classrooms. Won't be so intrusive here, just because we're so big here. But pretty much at Hammagill, Glenmont, Slingerlands, all the elementary schools, we're doing massive abatement there. It's going to have a tremendous impact. And we've already talked to the town about that regarding any programs that are, that are there. In fact, it's so big that we're actually going to tackle it over two summer times, just because we don't have the room to, to clear out and put the stuff while, while we do all this work. So we're starting to coordinate that with the principals. We're talking about staffing to do that, and the phasing and all that kind of good stuff. So really, Slingerlands, and we've talked to the town initially about this. Slingerlands is kind of like the only school that we're going to have potentially the summer program, the town's summer program at. But again, it's preliminary at this point, but we've had those conversations with the town already.
And, next slide. So all of this work, and this is, this is the work of campus, putting to, and it's just an example of many, 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 many pages of a master's schedule, where each main piece of work is broken down into its key component parts, and it's chronological. So if you replace something, it follows that something's coming out, and then you're putting something new in. So campus is very diligent about putting in the start dates, the duration of that work that we think it would take. This is all, does this go in the spec, in the bidding spec, Scott? Yep. Not the whole thing. So we'll capture the main milestone groups. Because this is, this is one of those lists that might be, you know, 10 bullet points, but they expand out with 20 different features underneath them that they all, all go along. It's a critical path, method chart, so the thing before it has to take place before the next thing goes on. So this is just a smattering of what it is. We'll use this as a tool to track the contractor's progress, to make sure they're meeting their deadlines. And if things fall behind, and that's why we have Scott and Ann should push them forward on that.
The notice before the contract, you know, it's falling behind anywhere. We update this every day. Once it becomes a master schedule, we'll update it every Friday, just to see where the plans at.
And at some point in time, we'll start a usually one- or two-week look ahead. So contractors will submit what they plan on doing in the next two weeks. And then you can track that with the master schedule too. So it's a really good, active, dynamic tool that we'll be using.
At what point in the project does the construction manager really come onsite and stay onsite?
Soon as we get approved, SEB will set up, you know. I'll have an admin on board right away, and just track the system. And we'll start tracking all pre-fit RFIs. In other words, people are asking questions. What does this really entail in the print? And we run it through the architect, and we can't flinch any errors. And we all look at it, go, well, here's the answer to it. We pass it on to everybody, so they're all, they all see the same information. That's when we'll start making full-time.
Probably around April.
Everything really ramps up. Potentially, if we stay on timeline with State Ed, right at April, you'll start seeing a lot of buildup in May and June. A lot of positioning going on in June to get started, right as soon as they can.
As soon as we do get our approval, that's when we're getting word out to the contractors, because our job also is providing excitement, wanting to get as many bidders as possible in all the different areas, so that we get good competitive bids. In relation to that, we get good bids, we save the district money, and we're able to do more work during the duration of the projects.
And we have already been contacting contractors that we know that we feel are decent contractors, and letting them know ahead of time, this project's coming out. And we've already started telling all the contractors right now.
How does the market look?
Right now, it's really good. It's a very good market right now. We're hungry.
And as we said earlier, this is the perfect time to be able to start a project like this in the springtime, versus many projects won't get their approvals until summer. They're then stuck in starting project in, in, you know, the fall season. And a lot of contractors are trying to gear up so that they can get their work in place now to carry on for the next year or two. So it's all good.
Will some simplified version of these schedules be on our website, so that people can?
Yeah, I think we can take this schedule and, like I said, compress it into just its main bullet, you know, the main areas of work. I, I think we could, yeah.
It's, it's still being developed at this point, very preliminary. I wouldn't want to put it up yet, you know, again, we are in our, our big PR.
Once we start to transfer this schedule over, so that people can see, hey, we're here, we're, Greg can provide an update to it.
Sure.
Whether it's a red line saying, hey, cross out. I mean, I know they'll see me wherever they set up their shop, or Greg, or Len coming in saying, okay, we're August. Are we there yet? And you'll see some blue lines that we're not there, and some red lines saying that we're done. But I think that's a good update as we get closer to April to have a.
And until we have state ed approval. I don't know if I'd put a timeline up until we have that.
Yeah, that's why the word potential came out, because we're happy that they did it before January. Now, if they can really get this other piece, I'm hoping that somebody from the community has had a hand in that. That would be nice, because we've certainly heard from some that work at State Ed that said, we can move it along, but they can't, they, they would like to, but they can't get involved.
Questions for Greg or the team?
Thank you very much. And I agree, I think once we have the approval and whatnot, we need to, we promised the community back when we did the bond, that we were going to have them regular updates out on the website and provide that information. And once Len meets with the coaches, I would recommend getting an SSN out to the community to notify them that we'll be offline as soon as we know that, so that there's not any unknowns that come up. And I'm sure Tim will be working with the boosters, so.
Yeah, and so that the board knows that we're probably a couple months before we come to you for the energy performance contract, that we'll also be bowing on the heels of this as well. As I know Greg and ECG, as well as Danforth, are wrapping up their audit at this point. So there's a lot of, a lot of major emphasis going forward that can be very beneficial for the district as well as our budget as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, at this point, the board would recognize any visitors that have a, something to say about a specific agenda item. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the board at this time? Okay. Item number nine, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action item, and it's item A.
Some of the second.
It's a first and a second. Any discussion? I just.
Glad we're at this point.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, I'm glad we're at this point.
Right. This, item A is actually the Bethlehem Central, the BCEAU agreement. They came to the administration, Dr. Douglas came to an agreement with the bargaining unit. We appreciate their concessions and whatnot. They'll be given additional healthcare costs. They'll be assuming a greater share of the healthcare costs than what they had under previous contracts. And we're receiving a, raises in addition to that. So we thank them for their continued support of the district. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the additional finance action items B and D, B, or, I'm sorry, B through D.
Can I actually make a motion to split B and C from D? I'm not sure why I do that.
I'm sorry, you want to, you want to?
Separate B and C from D.
Okay. We have a motion to separate out B and C from D?
Some move.
Or the second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just, the claims auditor is really an inaccurate title for that first part. They're really the warrants. We're approving the warrants, you know, paying the bills. So it just, you know, really, it should say the warrants. We're approving the warrants.
But we still have the motion to, do we, to, to separate out. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Okay. So we'll take action on items B and C?
Second.
It's a first and a second. Any discussion?
We'll make that change to warrant.
Change to warrant, okay. Because I believe it's been claims auditor who report for several meetings.
I thought, I thought they were two different things, actually.
Well, they're, yeah, but they're two different things.
They are. And I thought we were approving the warrants.
I mean, this, this would not allow us to pay the bills, and I think some people would be upset if we weren't approving the correct thing here, so.
Yep. Then maybe we need to have two separate action items, because one is the claims auditor.
Yeah, but I don't think it was there. It was just, it was just warrants, unless I missed it. I went through all the.
It's been claims auditor for quite a while.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll make that notation that it's a warrant. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Do I have a motion for item B under, nine? That's a first, second. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. That's a seven approved, one, I'm sorry, six approved, one abstention that carries. Going on to item number 10, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action, action items A through G.
Some move.
That's a first, second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just had a question generically, yeah, because I don't want to talk about anybody in particular. When we're hiring someone, and maybe Joey, you can answer this. I thought there was, you know, we didn't go beyond step five in general.
That's true.
Because someone here is.
I think there's someone on recall.
It's a recall.
Oh, it's a recall? Sorry, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Makes sense.
And Charmaine, did you have?
No, thank you. Sorry.
No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number 11, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff, staff action items A through I. That's a first.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item number 12, correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action items A through B.
Can I make a motion to split the two of them?
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, that's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of splitting out A and B? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Okay, can I have a motion on A?
Some moved.
That's a first, that's a second. That's for, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? A motion on item B under 12?
Some move.
That's a first, that's a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any, any, any against? Any abstentions? That's an abstention that carries, that carries six approvals, one abstention. At this point, we would recognize visitors who have, would like to address the board on any non-agend item? Okay. Future meetings, we have a meeting Wednesday, February 5th, Wednesday, February 26th, and Wednesday, March 5th, are the next three meetings. As Dr. Douglas also said, there is an advocacy night on June, next Thursday, June 30th at Colony Cent. I'm sorry, January 30th.
You're hoping for June, warm weather, warm weather.
I really do want the warm weather. I am rushing through. But on January 30th, next Thursday night, 6:30 at Colony Central High School, we would encourage anyone and everybody to please attend. We want to really show our local legislators that there is support behind the GEA, the gap elimination.
And wear their black and orange?
Yes, wear black and orange. We're going to try to wear school colors, so.
If I could also suggest, because for the, the public, there's potentially more than board members that will be attending, that this is not a meeting of the Board of Education. This is an advocacy event on individuals' preferences or political dynamics. So I just want that out there for the public, that there is no board meeting or any decisions to be made on that night.
Can I just clarify too? One of these meetings, upcoming meetings that are listed, is the first kind of rollout or overview of the budget. Do you know which one of that is?
February 5th is...
February 5th will be sort of, we're trying to figure out the best title, instead of
using the same titles that have been used by our president, our governor, our town supervisor and everything else. So that will be sort of initial glimpse of where we are and where we're going. The official rollout of the budget as we develop it will be Judy's presentation on February 26th.
Okay.
And then each of the presentations will be going forth. We'll be putting up the calendar, I believe at the end of this week, so people will see that as well.
Okay. And I, we do not have a need to go back into executive session. Pig students, as soon as we adjourn, you need to come up and sign out so you can get credit. And if you need a sheet of paper signed by any of the board members, any of us can sign that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
That's a first, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. We are adjourned.